Laura Johnson to come to the podium who will lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. Under the Riverview High School Color Guard, under the direction of retired Sergeant Major Roger Mitchell.
I am of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Riverview Color Guard and Mia and Lauren, thank you for coming up and joining us for the pledge. I'd like to introduce our student representative Noah Petrowski from Oak Park School. We previously presented him with a certificate of appreciation for joining us today. Welcome Noah.
Welcome.
How are you today?
Good thanks.
Can you tell us a little bit about yourself? You go to which school?
Oak Park School.
Wonderful. Well, we are so pleased to have you today. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let's give Noah a round of applause. We have a number of special presentations this evening, a very exciting night. Our first special presentation tonight is regarding the resolution designating the first two weeks in October as Disability History and Awareness Weeks. I would like to invite Sonia Figueroa-Alberts, Executive Director of Pupil Support Services, to this podium please. Who will read the resolution. Or do you not have it?
I thought you were gonna read it.
I can do it if you'd like me to?
Go ahead.
Shall I start?
Yes ma'am.
A resolution designating the first two weeks in October Disability History and Awareness Weeks by the School Board of Sarasota County. A resolution, excuse me, encouraging our schools and universities to provide instruction on disability history, people with disabilities, and the disability rights movement. Whereas there are approximately 375,000 students with disabilities in Florida's K-12 education system. And whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 is founded on four principles: Inclusion, Full Participation, Economic Self-Sufficiency, and Equality of Opportunity for All People with Disabilities. And whereas a key method of promoting these four principles is for our schools to recognize the contributions by people with disabilities to our society and provide instruction in disability history, people with disabilities, and the disability rights movement through schools' curriculum, schools' assemblies, and other school activities as it is desirable, that state post-secondary institutions promote activities that provide education awareness and understanding regarding people with disabilities. And whereas the legislature also encourages cooperation between the school system, post-secondary institutions, and the community at large to promote better treatment and fairer hiring practices for people with disabilities. Now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Sarasota County that the Board urges our schools to provide intensive instruction on disability history, people with disabilities, and the disabilities rights movement, especially during the first two weeks of October and periodically throughout the school year, and encourages other institutions to conduct and promote educational activities on those subjects. Be it further resolved that the first two weeks in October of every year be recognized as Disability History and Awareness Weeks in Sarasota County, Florida.
Thank you Madam Chairman. Good evening, Madam Chairman, School Board members, Mr. Hardy, Student Representative, Dr. Bowden, and community at large. This evening is about celebration. We celebrate the teachers, the peer professionals, and support personnel that dedicate themselves to teaching our exceptional students so they can achieve and transition into productive members of our society. Oak Park School is a place where learning is at the forefront and opportunities are provided for students to excel. This evening, our first showcase of school is about Oak Park School here in Sarasota County. With us this evening is the proud Principal of the Panthers, Mrs. Jamie Lowitz. Who will introduce her staff to showcase the Extended Transition Program that we offer among many others. Jamie?
Thank you. I'd first like to start out thanking Ms. Sonia Figueroa-Alberts for your support, your guidance, and your leadership. And thank you Dr. Bowden and distinguished Board members for providing us with this opportunity to showcase our school and our students tonight. Before I get started, I'd like to introduce my colleagues, Mr. Steve Brown Assistant Principal and Mrs. Maureen Bassett Assistant Principal. And I would also like to take a brief moment to ask Oak Park staff, because we are in the house tonight, to stand up so that we can recognize... This group of educators continuously provides quality educational opportunities for our students on a daily basis, and it is nothing short of amazing. So thank you all for being with us tonight. We sincerely appreciate you showing up with us. So the focus on our showcase this evening is to highlight our Extended Transition employment initiatives through our elective curriculum. I know that was a mouthful to say. Our goal for our Extended Transition students is to gain skills in a supportive yet rigorous environment so that students can be prepared for life beyond high school and the Extended Transition Program at Oak Park. We provide independent functioning through meaningful and gainful employment through supported and independent employment opportunities. We began preparing students for the workforce at Oak Park at age 14, and that sounds a little bit early, but we do that through interest inventories and through career exploration opportunities so that they can start to have some self-advocacy and tell us what it is that they think they might like to do once they exit Oak Park School. So by having them complete these interest inventors and career exploration, we are able to match them with appropriate placements within the community so they can learn the appropriate skills to go out and be meaningfully and gainfully employed. We continue throughout high school to partner with agencies that we want to mention today, APD and Vocational Rehab. We work very closely with them so that they can provide a continuum of services to our students once they exit our Oak Park family. Okay, alright, so moving on. Gotta get my notes here. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Brown because he is going to introduce some students to lead us in our Panther pledge. Mr. Brown?
Good evening everyone. We are so proud of the positive culture that we have established at Oak Park School. One of the things that has helped us so much this year is our new Panther pledge. It's our Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Initiative. All students have the opportunity after the Pledge of Allegiance on morning announcements to recite the Panther pledge. And every day, a different student gets the opportunity to come on the overhead announcement system with us and do that for the staff. So at this time, I'm gonna have two students come up here and show you our Panther pledge. First off, I'd like to introduce Ms. Sadie Barrera. Sadie, come on up. Alright, so one of the things we do is we put up our right hand, right Sadie? And we start our pledge.
Today, I will be respectful, on task, accepting, and responsible. I am an Oak Park Panther. Hear me roar. Roar!
Thank you Sadie. Have a seat. Now you notice the roar at the end. Our students have kinda added that to the end. Our last words are "Hear Me Roar", and then we have a nice school-wide roar that you can hear throughout the hallways at the end. Now, all of our students have been tasked with understanding, memorizing, and showing us they know the pledge. If they are able to, they receive one of these nice blue wristbands. And we're proud to say that just under 100% at this point has been able to recite the pledge to a member of administration or their teacher. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Cody Walker. Cody is a high school student who will do his Panther pledge with his assistive technology device.
So the symbols are all represented on here for Cody, and a friend of his has recorded the voice.
Hi, my name is Cody Walker.
Look at the pictures.
I am in ninth grade at Oak Park.
Yeah, okay. Turn the page.
Turn the page. Doing good.
Doing good.
This is our Panther pledge.
Okay.
Today, I will be...
Okay.
Respectful, on task.
I know you're excited.
Accepting, and responsible.
Good.
I am an Oak Park Panther.
Okay, turn the page.
Last part, last page.
Hear me.
Good job Cody. Good job.
Thanks Michelle.
Alright, thank you again Cody and Sadie. Great job. You did us proud. At this time, I would like to welcome two staff members, Mr. Kurt Bozenberg and Ms. Maureen Lloyd to come up. And they are going to talk about some initiatives that they are using in their curriculum for our Extended Transition kids to work on these life skills and these employability skills. And Mr. Swayze, is this when we're gonna do the video? Okay, so we're gonna show you a brief video just to kinda get you in the mindset of what we do. And then they will bring their students up and we will share with you some additional highlights.
Thank you. Erin, Colin, will you guys join me please?
Thank you School Board members for allowing us to be here. I would like to share with you some information with my students and myself.
We want to thank the School Board for inviting Oak Park specialists and students to showcase some of the job skills that we are providing. We would like to reflect on some important aspects that make this educational setting a success.
Thank you very much. Our students from the Extended Transition Program work on basic social skills and civility. They learn to greet each other with eye contact and positive verbal phrases. These basic skills can be used universally in the classroom, at work, and at home. And along with the use of critical thinking as a major theme, whether in the agriculture class or in the concrete production class. The use of critical thinking helps individuals to build self-esteem as they solve daily challenges. Colin, you're up.
We hope that some of the skills you have seen shown the depth of what these students are able to accomplish from building a chicken coop, hatching chicken eggs.
Beautification.
Beautification on campus, growing a school garden, and making concrete creations. We want to thank you for supporting our efforts at Oak Park.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Mr. B.
Thank you Mr. Ambassador.
I just wanna showcase some of my students that I have in my program. Just come stand right here. Show yourselves off. Okay, got everything Colin? Okay, good evening. Thank you for letting us share our talented students with you. I am Maureen Lloyd and my assistant Megan Van Dyk. And we work in the Vocational Art Department. And we've actually created our own little business with our students. And we do pretty well with sales and everything. It enables our Extended Transition students to experience every aspect of what it would be like to run and work in a small business or a company. We are training them on such skills as production, marketing, sales, and inventory. For example, here's my model. We start out with the whole projects. We do very well with our mosaic sales. A lot of you have our pieces. They go from everything to sanding the wood, taking orders. As you saw on some of those slides, they make all the little pieces. These students here glaze. Alexa's very good at putting the mosaics together. Lauren has grouted and sealed. I mean, we teach them everything. And all the way to the aspect of selling and collecting money. Our students are also in the process of a big beautification project in front of our new school offices. We're gonna be making clay totems, stepping stones. And we're working with Mr. Bozenberg. His kids will go out and measure with the horticulture and come up with the right plants to go with our pieces of artwork. We've also worked with the Greatest Sarasota Chamber of Commerce Leadership Program. We've worked with two projects with them. We did 30 seabirds for the seabird sanctuary across from Moot Marine. That was one of their year projects. I can't remember which year it was. You were involved. Do you remember what year that was?
It was two years back.
Two years, okay. And then this past year, they asked us to do totem poles and 20 stepping stones for the Glasser Schoenbaum Human Services Center for their 2018 program. And a lot of these kids worked on the stepping stones and the clay projects. So we do a lot with the community and involve them. The community also helps run our program and help create things for jobs. And these kids are wonderful. I can't even begin to tell you how awesome they are. And all the job skills that they're learning in the Extended Transition Program, they'll be able to take and be proud of themselves and hopefully be an integral part of the community. So we thank you for your time. Colin, come here. Lauren. Wait, wait, wait. Alexa, we want our picture taken. Come here Colin. This is for the School Board. Okay, but hang on to it for just a minute, okay? Smile.
One, two, three. We'll get one more. Ready? One, two, three. Excellent, thank you.
Good job guys, thank you. Lauren, oh, thank you.
Okay, we have a little bit of a surprise. Alright. So prior to you all entering in, if you're fortunate enough to have gotten a seat in here because it's standing room only, if you're fortunate enough to be seated, if you would please at this time check underneath the bottom of your chair to see if you have a pencil taped to the bottom of your chair. No one from Oak Park one guys, sorry. Okay, alright, there's one. There's a lot of pencils, so if you have a pen, okay. What we got?
Noah's titty.
Noah, Noah, you're... No one from Oak Park one. Dr. Bowden, were any of on the... Okay, so if you found a pencil, you found a pencil. Oh, okay, so here's the thing, okay? So Oak Park School is very proud to announce that in November, we are going to be hosting a Holiday Bazaar which showcases all of the wares that our wonderful students make on campus. And so it will be set up similar to a craft fair. We are renting booth space to them. They have to apply for a booth. They have to let us know what it is that they will be selling. They are responsible for their startup money. They are responsible for manning their booths. They are responsible for being able to communicate to potential customers a little bit about the products that they will be selling. And so it's gonna be a two-day school-wide event on November 29th and 30th. Once we fill our booth space with our students at Oak Park, we are gonna open it to select community vendors. I know we're gonna work with the ACT program at STC. They would like some booth space. If we have other high schools that would like to bring their engineering kids in or whoever to come in, so we're really excited about that, okay? So we wanna give you some samples about some things that are gonna be available on that night, okay? So to start out, let's see. If you have a pencil that says Pen Pal on the back. Alright, come on up. If you have a pencil that says Pen Pal. Alright. So these are greeting cards that our debt students make. And they are hand-done. And they range from Happy Birthday to Get Well, to Thanksgiving, to the holidays, to blank note cards. But they sell these five per pack. And so these will be available at our Holiday Bazaar. And since you're the youngest, I'm gonna let you go first, okay? Which step would you like? That one? That's yours. That's the Happy Birthday pack. Nice job. Congratulations. You're welcome. You're welcome. Was there one more Pen Pal? No?
No.
Alright. Alright, next. If you have a pencil that says Woof on it. You have one that says Woof? Alright, come on up. Cody, help me hand these out buddy. Alright, so quickly, pull these out just so that you can see. Our students made here. Dog biscuits. They make dog treats. We sell two flavors. We have lemon flavor and we have peanut butter flavor. And these are a favorite of our pet therapy dogs. They love these dog treats. So if you have a woof on your pencil, congratulations. I hope you have a dog.
Oh, a Pen Pal?
Oh, you have a Pen Pal honey. Oh, hold on. Where's my Pen Pal? Oh, right here babe. There you go. Congratulations. Alright, so that's the woof. Alright, next. If you have a pencil that says Rejuvenate on it. Come up. There's two. Rejuvenate. These are hand scrubs that are made in Ms. Pastor's class with her Extended Transition students. I don't know what scent you're getting. One is lavender, right Ms. Pastor? And the other is chamomile. So it's, I don't know. It's the luck of the draw, but congratulations. Thank you. You can keep that. If you have a pencil that says Green Thumb, come on up. Alright. These are plants that were planted by our Horticulture Department, Mr. B and his group of kids. And these are chrysanthemums that you can use for the upcoming Halloween and Thanksgiving holidays. And last but not least, if you have the pencil that says Caffeine on it... And last but not least, if you have the pencil that says "Caffeine" on it. Okay, so we hope that gives you a little bit of a teaser and maybe you'll stop by on November 29th and 30th to visit our Holiday Bazaar. We will be open from the hours of 11 until 3 both days, and it will be held in our gymnasium. So we are open to the community and we hope to see you out there, okay? Thank you, everybody who helped make things for us to bring tonight. All right. So it is my sincere privilege to introduce Oak Park's 2019 Teacher of the Year, Mr. Shane Swayze. Will you please come up? All right, buddy. You want to stand up here? Okay, so Shane is an integral member of our faculty. He runs our PBIS program. He chairs our SDMT. He teaches music. And this year, he is also doing music therapy for our students. So I'm going to turn the floor over to him and let him have a quick conversation about you, about the things that he's doing with his students within his classroom. And then he will present to you the Oak Park Choir for our culminating event. Mr. Swayze.
Thank you. Thank you, School Board, for allowing us this opportunity this evening. The bad news is I don't have any more prizes to give out, so I apologize ahead of time. It's hard to follow up that. Oh. It might be something, but it's a secret until later. So when I came to Oak Park School, I was actually, had a background as a board-certified music therapist. I have a bachelor's and master's degree in music therapy. And for those of you who have never heard of that before, which I'm sure is a number of you, and I won't make you raise your hands, music therapy is an evidence-based field in which a board-certified therapist uses music. But instead of teaching musical skills like a typical band instructor or music educator would, you're also really focusing on using music to reach non-musical goals. And so a lot of what we do at Oak Park and in the music program is using music to reach goals such as motor, social communication, academic. And music is a great tool. If you'd ever want to look into that more, I recommend musictherapy.org for more information on that. And with the help of the Teacher of the Year from last year, Nicole Mayo, who is our new master scheduler, she rearranged the schedule and allowed us some flexibility as electives teachers and really gave us some options to expand and provide some new services to our students. And so this year, one of those was the opportunity for myself to provide individualized music therapy for some of the students at Oak Park. And so I have over a dozen sessions where I see students weekly, and I use music to try to support their classroom goals and their IEP objectives. And it's really just been a great opportunity to see these students grow in ways that are really, really unique and just really great to see. We have tonight the first-ever presentation by the Oak Park Extended Transition Choir. And this is another thing that was made possible with our new focus on Extended Transition and electives. And I was going to kind of give you a little spiel of my own, but unknowingly, one of the students from the choir wrote me a note this week. And I thought it was a really great way to sum up what we do here at Oak Park and what the choir does. And if anybody has ever been in band or choir or a community band or even sang in church, you know the, not only the holistic nature of music, but the powerful social aspect of being with other people, participating in music together. And this is what she wrote. I think it's a great microcosm of our school. Dear Mr. Swayze, I was right. I think we should tour Florida, but our first stop is Sarasota County, then parts of Florida. So remember, reaching goals is what Oak Park students are about. And remember, just start off small. Let's start with touring Sarasota County with a school bus as a tour bus. Touring with everything cheap and budgeting stuff in Florida is really the best. Thanks for all your suggestions. Love, Alexa Severance. And on that note, I'd like to...
Do you want us to go down? Stand back. You can be amazing. You can turn a phrase into a weapon or a dog. You can be the outcast or be the backlash of somebody's lack of love. Or you can start speaking up. Nothing's going to hurt you the way the words do. And it's that on the skin. Go down the inside, no sunlight. Sometimes the shadow wins. But I wonder what will happen if you say what you want to say and let the words fall out. Honestly, I want to see you be brave with what you want to say and let the words fall out. Honestly, I want to see you be brave. I just want to see you. I just want to see you. I just want to see you. I want to see you be brave. I just want to see you. I just want to see you. I just want to see you. I want to see you be brave. Everybody been there, everybody's been stared down by the enemy. Calling for the fear and the disappearance. Bow down to the mighty, don't run. Just stop holding your tongue. Maybe there's a way out of the cage where you live. Maybe one of these days you can let the light in. Show me. I'll be your braveest. Say what you want to say and let the words fall out. Honestly, I want to see you be brave with what you want to say and let the words fall out. Honestly, I want to see you be brave. Innocent, your history of silence won't do you any good. Did you think it would? Let your words be anything but empty. Why don't you tell them the truth? Say what you want to say and let the words fall out. Honestly, I want to see you be brave with what you want to say and let the words fall out. Honestly, I want to see you be brave. I just want to see you. I just want to see you. I just want to see you. I want to see you be brave. I just want to see you. I just want to see you. I just want to see you. I want to see you be brave. I just want to see you. I want to see you be brave. I just want to see you. I want to see you be brave. Y'all are amazing. We have to get each of your signatures before you leave tonight.
We also have, I was kind of fibbing there. I guess I did have one present or prize. We would like Ms. Sonia Figueroa-Alberts to come up. Our choir spoke and we decided to make her an honorary Oak Park Panther Choir member. And to be an honorary member, you have to fit in.
Okay. Can't wait to this. I'll be wearing it with you when we tour Florida. And with that, we conclude our presentation of Showcase of Oak Park. And thank you all for listening and celebrating all our students in Sarasota County. We do amazing things for all our students.
Thank you. If you don't mind staying put, I know fellow board members want to make a couple comments. Mrs. Zucker.
That was fantastic. Absolutely great. And I have seen Mr. Swayze teaching these students that you can't believe what you're seeing. You have to go to Oak Park so that you can see the reaction of the students as they learn to play an instrument. It's just the most heartwarming thing you'll ever see. And then when you see them using their instruments to blow out of, to write on the board, it's phenomenal. Whenever I have an opportunity from the leadership Sarasota, I take them to Oak Park because I want to showcase you, because you are a primary example of what we can do in this district, what we are doing to make sure that everyone has an ability to reach their potential. So I thank you teachers, I just, all of you. It's just been fantastic.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodwin.
Well, I just want to say what a great job that was and how much I enjoyed it. I bought some mosaics before, and you can bet that I will be buying some again later this year. And I certainly will be attending the bazaar. Your principal, Jamie, you're doing a wonderful job. I've told you that 100 times, but I mean... Your staff and students and the practical side of the things that you're doing, the life skills that you're imparting to these beautiful, beautiful young students, which are just wonderful. I wish I could give each one of you a hug. I'm sending great love and wishes out to you. You did a marvelous job. Thank you again for coming tonight.
Mr. Robinson.
Yeah, you guys did a marvelous job. I was the one person clapping out of sync because I can't keep with them like you guys can. But, I mean, people are watching you, and there are people who move into Sarasota County specifically for Oak Park, for what it is and what it does to the children and what it does to the community. So thank you very much, and thank you, Jamie. And Jane's lassoing me to go with her to the bazaar. She's been talking it up, so she'll be getting me there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown.
You know, the presentation was wonderful and the entertainment, I loved. But the reality of what you do, not only do you help these children while they're there, but it's after they leave the school that's so important. I was talking with Olivia Babas, who works with persons with varying abilities out in the community. And she says the ones that come from our school district are so much better than some of the other schools in the community. And, you know, and that's one thing that I think our public schools have over some of our other schools. I know there's all kinds of vouchers and all kinds of things out there, but it's, if you want the protections of the Individuals with Disabilities Act, I mean, you go to our public schools. And, you know, she said when she went to school, it was hard to get the kinds of services she needed. But when you look at Oak Park and the services we provide our kids, it's just, well, and young adults, too, it is amazing. And the people who work there, amazing to come in day after day and all these struggles that you have, it just warms our heart to see this. And I'm going to post it on, I took a picture, going to post it on my Facebook, but I'm going to get there at November 29th at 11:00. I want to make sure that, you know, they're not sold out because you just took care of my shopping list. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, first, congratulations and thank you, Oak Park Choir. First of all, that's one of my favorite songs, so I was definitely singing along back there. But I'm glad I was hidden back there and participating. But I think the work that Oak Park does is, and it's been said here, it is a major differentiator across the state that Sarasota has here and the beautiful work that takes place. And I just, I want to thank all the teachers and the staff and the families just for the great work and the preparedness that you think well beyond these limitations that are often put on, and that's what really makes it special. So, and Shane, I will never forget the first time I visited there. It still brings tears to my eyes about the amazing work you do, and I'm so glad, well-deserved Teacher of the Year. But thank you for coming. I love that, the opportunity to see the great work and the beautiful work that you guys are doing. So applause. Thank you again. Now, we have a number of special presentations, and I know it is a school night, but if you would do me the pleasure of sticking with one, at least one more for the next one, I would like you guys to join us for the next presentation, which, if I may, invite Dr. Bill Vogel to the podium.
Thank you very much. I first wanted to start by thanking Mr. Tompkins for scheduling me so I could be here to hear this presentation. I thought it was outstanding. And I think all of you know how impressed I am with the quality of education that students receive in Sarasota County. And the commitment of the staff here was so obvious. And I really commend everyone for not only focusing on students achieving their highest level, but also focusing on transition.
Absolutely.
So thank you so much for inviting me to be here and follow this presentation. Tonight, I'm here representing the Florida Association of District School Superintendents. And I'd like Superintendent Bowden to join me here at the podium. My pleasure tonight, on behalf of the Florida Association of District School Superintendents, to recognize Superintendent Bowden for completing the rigorous Florida Superintendent Special Certification Program. In order to achieve this recognition, Dr. Bowden has had to attend five training institutes that focus on the leadership in key areas of school superintendents. And also, he's had to pass a rigorous written exam, which he passed with flying colors. So it's my privilege to congratulate Dr. Bowden on achieving this certification.
Mrs. Goodwin.
Thank you very much.
Well, I just want to congratulate you, Dr. Bowden. I know that you got this in record time. I think it's a normal two-year program that you did in about a year. I know that it's difficult. I have worked on being a certified board member and keeping... I have worked on being a certified board member and keeping my points for professional development current every year. I just entered some, in fact, in the last couple of weeks. But I don't think we've had a superintendent who has earned this recognition. And you had to take hard tests and I didn't. So, I just want to say, congratulations. We think a lot of your service and this is no small recognition. And we're really happy that you've received this certification. Big job and many kudos. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson.
I also want to thank you. It shows your dedication to education and the fact that you're willing to go out and learn and get certification and not just be an educational leader, but an educational doer. So, thank you very much for continuing. And hopefully, the road won't stop here, that you continue the improvement process. Just I have faith that you will. So, thank you.
Mrs. Zucker.
You are awesome. You are, I'm sorry, I didn't have my mic on. You are awesome. I mean, with everything that you do here in the district and everything that you manage in the schools, to be able to continue your education and to get that certificate as quickly as you did is amazing. You were the right person that we hired and I'm so happy that we hired you. And I can only thank you for coming to this district.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown.
You know, I know they think of being a superintendent as all about education, which, you know, that's what you oversee, the education. But it's about running a district. And there's a lot of work to be done. I mean, we are the largest employer in the county. We've got one of the largest budgets of any of the governments in the county. And there's a lot of laws and a lot of situations that you have to learn how to deal with that are, you know, beyond educational experience. So, there's a lot of things that you learned there, but you brought a lot of things to the table with that. And I do hope that you two continue on this road and so that you can continue to be a better supervised superintendent and lead this district forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And I too want to congratulate you. And thank you, Dr. Vogel, for taking the time to come down here. I know we wanted to make this a special presentation and honor you for the work that you've done. And as I said, I know that was, you accelerated it much quicker than the average. So, again, applause, congratulations and thank you very much. And you may be wondering why there's an additional balloon on Mrs. Brown's, big balloon on her chair. It is her birthday, so if we could all just say happy birthday to Mrs. Brown.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Shirley. Happy birthday to you.
The big 2-9.
Man, we really needed Oak Park Choir there. We weren't. Moving, so that completes those. And I, again, I know it is a school night, so we do have additional presentations. But please feel free to depart if you want to get rest. I want to, if you want to, give you a couple minutes to, you're welcome to stay. I don't want to rush you out by any means either. But do want to give you an opportunity. And if we clear the room, I'll pause for a moment. And thank you again for coming. Thank you.
Say, "Thank you, Dr. Vogel."
Thank you. Richard, Richard, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you so much, Bill. Thank you.
This was great.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Hi, Jamie.
Nice. Guys, thank you. Thank you.
Keep that door. Bye-bye.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us. Bye, Noah, take care. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I'm glad Bill got to see some of our...
Moving on to the next presentation, which I know those are hard acts to follow. I would like to invite Daniel Schwied, I'm sorry, Schwein, Human Resource Staffing Administrator, to the podium for the Preparing New Principles presentation. No pressure, no...
I was sitting back there thinking, "Don't cry, don't cry." I'm trying to get the fatigue. And I'm not a crier and I tell you, that was amazing. And I know they're not here, but I just, I'm just still awed. So, it was a great presentation. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Bowden, everybody. I wanted to just thank you for your time this evening for a couple reasons. First and foremost, to recognize some of our amazing administrators in our district. The opportunity to recognize the administrators who have recently gone through our Preparing New Principles Program and graduated from that. Much like Dr. Bowden getting your certification for your superintendency, they have now earned their certification to be principals in our district. So, it's an honor to work in a district that recognizes the strength of the leaders that we have and then builds them to be even greater leaders and looks from within to promote and have incredible principals in our district. While HR oversees the process in complete transparency, we have amazing administrators to work on this behalf to make sure that it comes to fruition. So, tonight, I'm going to ask that Dr. Katz and Carol K. Brown come forward and talk a little bit more about our PMP process and our recent graduates.
Good evening. I'm Wendy Katz and it's been my privilege to oversee the Preparing New Principal Program for the past 15 years. And it's my pleasure now to introduce Dr. Carol K. Brown, who I'm sure you all know is the new Director of Leadership Development. And it's been really a treat and an honor to work with her this year as we sort of transition. I think you know, but I'm just going to tell you again, I'm so impressed with her. She brings an incredible skill set in working with some of the most difficult schools in Hillsborough County, title schools. I can't comprehend that she was actually a principal and also a lead principal of 30 schools, where she provided professional development and support. So, I think we're enormously grateful and proud that you know you'll be in good hands with the program. But tonight, we are celebrating and honoring our six school leaders that have completed the Preparing New Principal Program. We worked with them last year. And I am going to present them to you. I just want to share a little bit of information. I won't go on, but I want you to understand that each school district in Florida has to have this, it's called the Level 2 School Principal Leadership Program. It has to be approved. We just recently had our program re-approved. And our program is two years. And again, what's, the supervising principals and executive directors recommend whether or not APs or principals are ready for this program. And also, it's important to note that if you're a principal coming from out of state, there's no reciprocity. So, they do have to go through this program as well. It's very rigorous. I think it's comparable really to getting another master's degree. It's two years. These administrators have to actually demonstrate their proficiency in all 10 Florida leadership standards and 45 indicators. Unlike just taking a course and learning, for example, about how to analyze data in a school or how to really coach and mentor teachers, they then have to have artifacts that actually prove that they've been able to demonstrate that in their schools. And so, it's applying it. So, sometimes it might be about creating a positive school culture, respecting diversity, moving student achievement forward, those types of things. And at the conclusion then, they, we are saying that we believe that these individuals have the skill sets, the dispositions, and the knowledge to be successful as principals. The thing that really distinguishes, I believe, our program from other programs in the state is the reflection piece. That we say it's not enough for you to do something, but we want you to think about what you're doing. And so, they ask and have to reflect on questions. What did you learn about yourself and others? What would you have done differently? What would surprise you the most? Those are the kinds of things. So, we emphasize that throughout the program. And I believe they'll, we have one of our graduates, Troy Thompson, who is now recently, come on up now, is... Yeah. Recently graduating, the last cohort, that wants to talk a little bit about the impact of this program. But what they do with these artifacts is they all are now doing electronic portfolios that are all done in OneNote. They do a 360 assessment, self-assessment, that gives them some idea of how they see themselves and how others see themselves as leaders. They lead book studies and then select other areas for learning. So, I'll let Troy give you just some insights.
So, thank you, Dr. Katz. And as I look out at my fellow PMP graduates, I guess, is that the right term? Graduates. But as I look out into the group, we had a great learning experience for two years together. So, not only was the content, the domains, indicators, but also we built some professional relationships. I do want to take a moment to thank Dr. Katz. Actually, Dr. Katz, I've been with you since 2008 in leadership programs, Excel, Leadership Academy, and now PMP. And again, I'd like to take a minute if I can, just give a round of applause to Dr. Katz. And also, before I get started, I promised one of my first grade teachers I would do this. Mr. Robinson, Mrs. Pedro, thanks you so much for the donation for the books. Actually, that event is happening tonight. We have over 60 families attending and they're all getting books thanks to your generosity. So, thank you so much. So, I had the privilege of finishing up PMP in 2017. And I have to say it was a powerful experience for us and Assistant Principal. As, you know, we work with our colleagues and we have an opportunity to really apply the knowledge, apply the experiences. But not only that, to be able to reflect on what we're doing. As I know my fellow cohort members, a lot of times we don't get a chance to think and reflect because we're just doing the work, making good decisions every day. But the power of PMP was really that reflection piece of hearing, sitting down, thinking about our decision-making. Because when you become a principal, what you find is you're making decisions very quickly. And you have to make good decisions based on what's good for kids. And it just gives you an opportunity to always look through that lens. So, a very powerful opportunity to do that. It was also essential for us to connect not only one domain with another, but to really understand that our decisions have multifaceted outcomes or effects. So, you really have to know if you make a decision, which PMP allowed us to do, it has far-reaching results or, again, effects on not only students but families. For me, though, the members of PMP, as I was very fortunate to be selected and it's hard to represent such an amazing group of leaders, cohorts past and present, again, if you look at all the leadership in our district and you ask them, "Were you in PMP?", they would say, "Yes." So, again, as we have leadership all the way from superintendent, our school board, and our administrators, just know that this is a program that is part of making sure that our district maintains its excellence. And leadership is where it starts. And of course, where it all matters is in the classroom. So, and that was always part of our reflection, right, our PMP group? If you guys don't mind standing up, I don't know if you were planning on doing this, Dr. Katz. Do you guys mind standing up?
I'm going to call them up.
Oh, you're going to call them up? Even better, okay, good. I don't want to be up here alone anymore. So, but anyway, they're an amazing group. Again, we learn from each other. Again, it was an honor to stand up here and just say a few words. And thank you, school board members, Dr. Bowden, for, again, continuing to support our leadership with a new phenomenal leader. So, thank you and have a great night.
So, at this time, I think we're going to call them up to receive their certificates. Carol's going to help. And would you like to all to come down and then you could shake hands with them, congratulate them individually? I just, again, want to applaud this, you can come on up, all of you come on up and then we'll, so you won't have to, as we call your name. Amazing work ethic, deep commitment to continued professional learning and collaboration, and truly making a positive difference for the students and the families and the schools that they serve. And it's been really an honor and privilege for me to work with them. Okay.
It is my pleasure and honor to present Kate Hefner with her certificate. Congratulations. Jamie Hannan. Congratulations. Kristy Jarvis. Congratulations. Jamie Kizner. Congratulations. Kent Miller. Congratulations. And Allison Rine. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Can we get a picture? I want to get a picture.
Thank you again. And then, moving on to the next presentation, I would like to invite Lindsay Cantis, Coordinator for the Office of Community Involvement, who is also a winning, you're recipient of an award tonight, earlier. Did you have a pencil?
Yes, yes. I know, I got a, well, yes, I got a pencil. It was the hand scrub.
There you go.
Hope I got lavender.
A winner tonight.
Yes. So, I'm situated here. So, I'm situated here. All right. Hello, everyone. Good evening to Superintendent Bowden, Madam Chair, and the board, and everyone else here. I'm Lindsay Cantese, and I'm the Office of Community Involvement Coordinator for Sarasota County Schools. My office supports volunteers, business and community partners, and site-based coordinators at our schools. This evening, I'm so excited to announce to you the teams from the 18 schools in our district that applied for and have been awarded the Florida Department of Education Award called Five Star School. This is for their exemplary... I don't know why I always write that in there, because I always mess up. Exemplary collaboration with the community during the 2017-2018 school year. The Sarasota County School District has amazing community support and collaboration, which is evident if you go to any school during school hours or after-school programs. Our community makes a tremendous impact on our students each and every day. The Florida Department of Education recognizes this impact and the importance of community involvement, and this recognition is expressed through the Five Star School Award. Because the Five Star School Award centers around community involvement with schools, my office has been given the honor to work with the Five Star process throughout the year. I'm so happy to do so. I got to work with a bunch of schools through my first year, and it was really a great opportunity for me to learn about our schools. The Five Star requirements are rigorous, and schools must meet 100% of the 31 criteria set forth from the Florida Department of Education in following five areas. Community and business partnerships, which is facilitated by a school business partner coordinator; family involvement, which is generally facilitated by PTOs, PTAs, and boosters; volunteerism, which is facilitated by school volunteer coordinators; student community service, which is a school-wide effort; and school advisory councils, which is facilitated by the SAC chairperson. As you can see, each school has a team, or sometimes it's one person, that wears 40 hats that handles all of these areas. This takes tremendous coordination, communication, and collaboration. To qualify, schools must submit a written application and a portfolio that includes documentation for each of the 31 criteria across the five aforementioned areas, with the community and partnership toward improved student achievement. Not only do they document the hard work that they all do, but they provide evidence of educational impact, which I think is a really awesome thing that they are required to do by the state. The Five Star coordinators work so hard to put these portfolios together, and I don't know how often this has been emphasized, but this is a huge task that schools undertake. There's a reason that not every school's up here right now, or that will be walking up here right now. It takes a lot of effort, and there's a Five Star coordinator at these schools that does this. And I really want to say thank you to all of you for doing it. I acknowledge the hard work that you put forward for this, and it was really impressive to me my first year, learning about your schools that way. This Florida Department of Education Award began 24 years ago, and we actually have a couple of schools that are receiving it for their 24th year. And so we'll get along to the awards. So for the recipients, it's going to work the same if you've done this before. So you'll come up and receive your certificate from Tracy Beaker, Director of Communications. And then we also got the date placards in. So you will have the date placard as well. Then you'll move to the center of the room, where Madam Chair and hopefully Superintendent Bowden can come down and take a photo with the banner. So you all can hold the banner here for us. It's small. They... Yeah, they walk up, you take the picture, it'll be cropped, it'll be great. So then you'll take your photo in front of the dais, and then after the photo, please move across the room to behind the dais, and you can shake everyone's hand and be congratulated that way. So let's get started. Our first award goes to Sarasota Academy of the Arts, and this is actually their fifth year that SAA has earned this award. So please come forward, Principal Cheryl Corwin, Five Star Coordinator Kelly Marsh, and Business Manager Matt McHugh. The seventh-year award goes to School of Arts and Sciences... Oh, I'll let the photo happen, probably. Yeah. All right. The seventh-year award goes to Sarasota School of Arts and Sciences. Congratulations Board President Dr. Marilyn Highland, Principal Tara Tomasz, Assistant Principal Carl Williams, Assistant Principal Kylie Gannon, and Five Star Coordinator Michael Reed. Love the big group. The eighth-year award goes to Atwater Elementary School. Congrats, Five Star Coordinator Heather Bingle. Is she here? The 11th-year award goes to two schools. Firstly, Lamarck Elementary School. Congratulations, Principal Troy Thompson. Glad I made the softball cutoff. Really hot. Yeah. You're welcome. Okay. And Pineview School, Five Star Coordinator Laura Parlercio.
Good job.
Did I get it?
Yeah. Don't ever tell me to come too. I love you bringing people together.
Yeah. The 13th-year award goes to two schools. First is Laurel Nakoma School. Come on up, Reading Coach Cheryl Katrona, Teacher Greg Lingwist, ESE Liaison Eliana Sarochi, SRO Tracy McCoy, Assistant Principal Christine Oliver, and Assistant Principal Heather Wasserman. And, okay, so, yeah, so, just kidding. Yeah. And Tatum Ridge Elementary School, Principal Barry Dunn, Assistant Principal Sarah Neuse, and PTO Parent and Five Star Assistant Jessica Feather. The 15th-year award goes to Cranberry Elementary School. Congratulations on 15 years, Principal Linda Daniels, and Five Star Coordinator Carmen Turner. I want to take a moment to thank Carmen. Last year was my first year doing this, obviously, it was my first year here, and Carmen walked me through everything, so thank you so much, Carmen. I really appreciate it. She's the best at Five Star so far. All right. The 19th-year award goes to Phillippe Shores Elementary School, Principal Allison Foster. The 20th-year award goes to Glen Allen Elementary School. Unfortunately, Glen Allen was not able to make it tonight, but if you see them around, congrats on 20. Next is the 21st-year award, which has two schools as well. First is Fruitville Elementary School. So Principal Steve French, Assistant Principal Jamie Hannan, and Five Star Coordinator Jessica Seltzer. And Toledo Blade Elementary School. Congratulations, Assistant Principal Michelle Giddens, and Five Star Coordinator and fourth grade teacher Kimberly Bowenmeyer. Two schools have achieved Five Star status for 22 years. First up is Lakeview Elementary, Principal Lisa Wheatley, and Five Star Coordinator Megan Wink, or just Lisa Wheatley. And Anglewood Elementary School, Five Star Coordinator Penny Share. Is she not here? I know it's a little late. Okay. So that's... Yep. Now is the 23-year award, which also goes to two schools. First is Ashton Elementary. Congratulations, Principal Kristy Jarvis. And Taylor Ranch Elementary School. Come on up, Dr. Bill Belander. Lastly, we have two schools that have earned this recognition for 24 years, since the inception of the award in 1994. So first is Bayhaven School of Basics Plus, Principal Chad Erickson. And Venice Elementary School. Congratulations, Principal Kirk Hutchinson, Five Star Coordinator Chandra Riley, and Volunteer Coordinator and Teacher Bethany Burnett, who's not here. Thanks, guys. Congrats. All right. You're good. You're off the hook. Yeah. Thank you. So these awards not only demonstrate wonderful teamwork and collaboration, but it also is an effort by the school to thank their communities for everything that they do. The Five Star Award shows everyone in the state that Sarasota County Schools has a tremendous community behind us. Please join me in giving one more round of applause congratulating all of our Five Star Schools. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Before the coach walks out, I just want to also, when we talk about people who involve their community, you know, Coach Cantese is out there in the community too. And when you're talking about teams and different teams...
I think it's Lindsay.
She develops teams. I mean, she creates teamwork like you wouldn't believe. She takes... Kindergarten teacher, it's pretty much like that. She takes a bunch of eight, nine, 10 people who are probably too young to be playing, but, you know, makes them into a cohesive team. So, you know, when you're talking about giving out leadership and community awards, Coach Cantese, you know, you always get one, so...
Yay, Lindsay.
Good job, Coach.
I like that Mr. Cantese is out there waving.
He's not Coach, but he's not Coach.
Okay. And let me make sure... Last, but very, very, very not least, is our National School Lunch Program proclamation, and I'd like to invite to the podium Dr. Beverly Gerard, Director of Food and Nutrition. Thank you for your... Yay! Now, I... Okay, I just want... This says two different things, and I'm not going to make the same mistake. So, do you have... Do I just kick off the proclamation?
Right ahead.
Where... Okay. National School Lunch Week official proclamation. Whereas the National School Lunch Program has served our nation admirably for over 60 years through advanced practices in nutrition education, and whereas the National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children, and whereas the National School Lunch Program has been joined through the years by many other excellent child feeding programs, and there is evidence of continued need for nutrition education and awareness of the value of school nutrition programs. Now therefore, I, Bridget Ziegler of the School Board of Sarasota County, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of October 15 through 19, 2018, as National School Lunch Week. I encourage all residents to become aware and concerned about their children's, their children's, and their own nutrition habits in hope of achieving a more healthful, healthful citizenry for today and the future. In witness whereof, I have hereunto sent me hand and cause the official seal of the School Board of Sarasota County, Florida, to be affixed, done at the school board meeting this second day of October in the year 2018.
Thank you.
Yay.
I was just thinking, as I was sitting through the presentations this evening, our employees in Food and Nutrition Services have the unique opportunity to interact with almost all children in the schools. All the kids come through the lunch line. Our employees are, as you know, are hardworking, they're committed, they're dedicated, and if you haven't already signed...